Welcome to the Village of Woodbury zoning board of appeals meeting for January 2024. If you join me in standing for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with introductions to the board. To my far right, to your right, we have Ms. Beverly Silveira, Mr. Michael Wozniak, Mr. Ed DeJesus, Ms. Rachel Bruce. I'm Craig Brady, chairperson, and to my right is Ms. Kelly Naughton, our council. As a matter of procedure, our next meeting will take place on Wednesday, February 14th. That's when it's scheduled for. Onto our agenda. Before I start, a couple of things that the agenda went through some late changes. One is we have a piece of new business, an extension, a previous variance that we're going to discuss on item three, the new business. And in section, the public hearing section, we've had a request from Spayside to adjourn that particular public hearing, and Ms. Kolikowski has received correspondence from her that the application is being withdrawn. So if anyone's here for either of those, they will not be taking place tonight.
Do you want a question?
Sure.
So Spayside is for February 14th?
It's going to be adjourned until March 13th.
Oh.
So you get Valentine's Day, night of the...
Correct. Thank you, Kelly. We have no executive session tonight. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from our December meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
What motion?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to accept the decision as...
Very good.
Second.
Second by Ed. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'll abstain my vote, actually, because I wasn't here for the meeting in December.
So we have an abstention on Michael. Under new business, the Shops at Woodbury variance extension, we received correspondence from the applicant's council detailing the efforts that have been undertaken to acquire the building permit for this pylon sign, indicating that infrastructure and other prerequisites needed to be completed before they could get a building permit or move that process along. They have moved that process along, and they expect to be able to provide everything needed to the building department within the 90-day extension period if we grant it. So, anyone have any comments or discussion on extending the variance for the Shops at Woodbury pylon sign?
No, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, anyone? Good, okay. Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to extend it.
So it's actually measured from your December date. They did timely file, so it would be a motion to extend it until your March 13th meeting.
Very good.
I make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Second by Michael. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Actions on decisions. Our first is Hartman 88 Jefferson. This is to review the decision for a variance for the construction of, in addition to a single-family dwelling, where his personal went to Section 310-7, the maximum permitted impervious surface coverage is 20%, and the applicant is proposing 30%. Said property is located in the R1A zoning district at 88 Jefferson Street in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax map as Section 240, Block 1, Lot 9. I'll note that the GML 239M response was received from the Orange County Municipal Planning Department, indicating that it does not appear that intermunicipal or countywide impacts would result if the board finds that granting the relief is warranted in this manner, and it is therefore local determination. The Orange County DPW also reviewed the application under GML 239F and found no impact to any county road or county-owned property. So after several pages of facts and findings, the decision of the board is as follows. As a consequence of the board's discussion, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested area variance described and discussed above to the extent noted above, conditioned on the applicant, A, or one, having proper provisions in place to handle the stormwater runoff from the additional impervious surface area as determined and approved by the planning board; two, receiving approval from the building inspector under the New York State Building and Fire Code for the placement of the addition relative to its distance from the existing pool; and three, receiving all necessary permits from the building department. And the board hereby finds that the variance is granted is the minimum variance necessary to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood. Per Section A 316-9E of the Village Code, this decision shall expire if the building permit is not obtained by the applicant within 180 days from the final date of approval by the planning board. The board may extend this time for one additional period of 90 days if such extension is warranted by the particular circumstances. Any comments from the board?
None.
May I have a motion to accept the decision?
Make a motion.
Motion by Rachel, second by Beverly. I'll do a roll. Shall we do a roll call? Let's do a roll call. Beverly?
Aye.
Michael?
Abstain. I wasn't here, so...
Ed?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So the Hartman decision for 88 Jefferson is granted. Our next action on decisions is Brown, 5 First Avenue. This is to review a decision for variances and interpretation for modifications to an existing seasonal two-family dwelling and the conversion of the two-family dwelling to year-round use with less than the required acreage and which does not meet the front, side, or rear yard setbacks. Where his personal went to Section 310-26, the lot must meet the development standards provided for a single-family dwelling permitted in the district, and where his personal went to Section 310-43.2, non-conforming uses shall not be enlarged, altered, extended, or restored, and personal went to Section 310-43, non-conforming buildings may be remodeled or reconstructed, provided that such action does not create any new noncompliance or increase the degree of noncompliance. Said property is located in the R2A zoning district at 5 First Avenue and is known in the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 214, Block 7, Lot 3. In this case, the GML 239M responds from Orange County Planning Department, indicating, again, that it does not appear that intermunicipal or countywide impacts would result if the board finds that granting relief is warranted in this manner and is thus local determination. They also offer the following advisory comments. The applicant should be aware that the proposed project is in an area known to contain habitat suitable for a number of endangered or threatened species, including the northern long-eared bat, the Indiana bat, and the timber rattlesnake. We advise the applicant to utilize best practices during construction in order to minimize any accidental takings of these species. Best practices are likely to include times for tree harvesting and placing bat houses along the site, among other measures. So after several pages of facts and findings, the decision of the board is as follows. As a consequence of the board's discussion, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested area variances described and discussed above to the extent noted above, conditioned on, one, the applicant demonstrating that the property has access to municipal water and sewer services, or meets current New York State and Orange County Department of Health standards for water and sewer services in accordance with Village Code, Section 310-43.C4, prior to issuance of a building permit; and, two, the applicant receiving all necessary approvals from the planning board and permits from the building department, and hereby finds that the variances is granted are the minimum variances necessary to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood. Per Section A 316-9E of the Village Code, this decision shall expire if a building permit is not obtained by the applicant within 180 days from the date of this decision or the date of final approval by the planning board if such an approval is required. The board may extend this time for one additional period of 90 days if such extension is warranted by the particular circumstances. Does the board have any comments or discussion on this item?
None.
No, I'm good.
Can I have a motion to approve the decision?
I make that motion.
Ed with the motion?
Second.
Second by Beverly. Any discussion further? Beverly, how do you vote?
Aye.
Michael?
Abstain.
Abstain. Ed?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So those variances are granted. It's not vodka. I wish it was, but it's not vodka. Okay, moving on. Next section of our agenda is public hearings. So as noted, Kolikowski has withdrawn Spayside. Do we need to open?
You should open and adjourn. It will be reduced.
Right, so we'll note that this application has a lot of things going on in it, and there have been questions going back between councils, and today their council requested that it be adjourned to our, well, for 60 days, so to our March meeting. This will give us time to look at specifics that need to be requested from that council, and then give them time to respond and develop the necessary materials as appropriate. So with that, has everybody read all of the material that's been provided on this application?
Yes.
Okay.
Read it, yes. Understand it?
Yes, that's part of the problem with that we're asking for additional information. So with that, I will, I will open, I will open the public hearing. If anyone wishes to comment on this, please come up to the mic, but I will note that if you have substantive comments, it would probably be best to wait until the March meeting when their council can hear your comments.
Is that a faring?
Yes. Spayside, correct.
It was postponed to March.
So if you do, please come up to the board, to the council, introduce yourself to us.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is David Clark, and I live in Highland Mills, 8 Evans Drive. Real close, and I'm sure some of you guys already know me. Ladies, good to see you. First of all, thank you so much. This is a really great team, and at least from what I hear, you're crossing your Ts and dotting your Is on variances. Thank you. I mean, it's necessary, but the reason why I'm up here is to ask kind of an oddball question. How does it get to you? For instance, I want to change my property, and I need to go through the building department, and I put a request in, and I tell them what I want, and he comes and takes a look at my property and says, okay, let's go down the list, I'm assuming, and whether or not he gives me a right of way, depending on that, you may or may not know about this. But then if I have, if I want something done, and he says, no, you can't get it done, and he denies me, I can come in front of you and ask you for a variance?
Yes.
Okay, so...
The short answer is that is pretty much the description. What would usually occur is the building department on your building permit application would state the reason for the denial, and they would kind of walk you through and say you can apply to the zoning board of appeals for a variance on that particular item or whatever the case may be.
Okay, now, on the reverse end, somebody has been given an approval, and the time lapsed in getting a variance approved, or discussing it, or actually trying to fight that approval, is expired, and then another violation comes in, and it's filed, and now there's nothing to be heard yet. The building department has not made a decision yet on this one specific situation. When he does, it goes to you, I'm assuming, if he allows it to go through, and I want a petition to stop it, I would have to come in front of you. Based upon what I'm hearing, Spayside Quarry wants to do a bunch of things, and it's in front of you. But do you get any of our input? Is it just your...
That's the public hearing.
So if it were today, I'd give you my opinion, and I'd give up whatever documents I had, and then you would go back and review them to decide as a panel, as a judge, to say, hey, this seems to be out of whack, or it's working, or whatever, and you'll give your interpretation.
Correct.
Thank you. That's all I can ask, and thank you so much for what you're doing. Happy New Year.
This might be related to something different, so there are certain guidelines for certain types of applications before this board, so I want to make sure that we're clear that for this one and for Spayside, it's properly before this board, and it goes back through the provisions of the code as well as through a special permit from the...
Oh, listen, I...
I just want, I just wanted to be clear for the record that there are certain guidelines that the board needs to evaluate these items under.
Yes, and I would say, just to finish that part off and to back you guys up, is that if there's some, if the building department is responsible for overseeing the codes, to make sure everybody's in line with the codes, and he misses something, it's up to the people in the town to say, hey, I don't like that, doesn't look good, I want to speak up, and this is the forum to do it in.
No, the forum for that is to file a complaint with the building department. The building department would investigate that complaint. That's it.
No, no, but what if the building department, you file a complaint with the building department, and they don't side with you, and you want it to be looked at and examined? Because you...
Then you would need to appeal that determination. You would ask for that determination in writing, and you would peel it. But this is not related to the Spayside Quarry?
No, it will be, though, eventually, because from what I see...
Right, but what we're talking about right now is Spayside, and I just want to keep it limited to that.
I'm only asking about how it gets to you, and eventually Spayside will get to you, and you will be listening to us give you our interpretation. So whether it's Spayside or anything else, if there's something that's unjust, and we feel it's not just, we file a complaint, and eventually, if it does get to you, you'll review the complaint.
They will review the code and see how it applies to the particular situation.
Okay, good enough. I know you know this, what I'm going at.
I do, which is why I don't think that it's not appropriate for tonight.
I was not here for that. I was here for Spayside, because I live right next door to it, and there was a couple other things, so I just wanted to know now, how does it get to you from Spayside?
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure for tonight that the board knew...
There's nobody here. There's nobody here, that's what I'm saying.
Well, we do have one other item we want to get to.
I'm sorry.
We have another, we have another variance request that we need to deal with.
It is the morning?
13th.
Much 13th.
13th. Happy New Year. Anyone else wish to speak to the Spayside application? Maria Hunter?
Remember, substantive comments. It would be better when the applicant's here.
Maria Hunter, Highland Mills. I just have a question about...
Did you just want to get you so you didn't have to stay the whole meeting if he announced it in the beginning because the applicant wasn't there?
Did you get it this morning?
Today.
It was today. We're requesting additional information, and the applicant doesn't have time to, didn't have time to get it before the meeting, so it's being adjourned. But we wanted to know if you did release it the whole night?
It's okay. Thanks. I'm surprised what it was. I thought it would be...
It was posted on the website. It was in big red letters.
Yeah, we put it on the website as soon as we could, but we know that it was last minute, so...
The Village of Woodbury?
Village of Woodbury, Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, happy new year.
That's okay. The applications that they put in says, "Application for special permit." In reviewing the ZBA's paperwork on their website, just curious as to why the statement of ownership and interest, which shows use variance, why that wasn't used? Because this is a use variance, correct, or not?
No, it's a special permit, it's not a use variance. They're very different.
Okay.
I just don't think that there's actually a specific application form, because the board doesn't have a lot of them, but there's a lot of information, if you go through that application, that needs to be corrected and clarified.
Then how come on all their documents, it says special use permit?
Special use permit and special permit are often used...
Interchangeably.
Interchangeably, yeah.
I'm just curious, because everything should be, if the applicant needs to put this all in order again, they're missing the SBL on here, the dates missing on here, it's, to me, it's an incomplete application.
Yeah.
Hence, the reason why it's been...
Okay, I'm just curious, because things...
I'm requesting corrected and additional information from the applicant, because it was in such incomplete form.
And then the other thing I was going to ask is, the planning board applications, their documents, they have what's called an entity disclosure form, and in reading that, it says, "An entity is for purposes of this mandated disclosure form is any corporation, LLC, partnership, trust," and goes on and on. Does the ZBA ever require this, because there's LLCs with this particular applicant? And there's more than one, because there's more than three properties involved?
There are. Typically, it doesn't come up before the ZBA, and I think it's enacted under Chapter 96, which is for building code, so I'd have to look to see, but if it is required, I'll certainly make that request as well, when I ask for the additional information.
Okay, because I know it is, I know it definitely is for planning boards with New York State, but I wasn't sure about the ZBA status on that.
Yeah, I'll have to take a look and just make sure it's complete.
Thank you. That's, I'm just here because the timeframes, I will talk further when the applicant is here, that they're requesting for cleaning, if I've read it right, and the cleaning of equipment, but the trucks, this board needs to maybe take a visit down there at 7:00 in the morning to see the trucks lined up, waiting to get in, and take a visit down there. You might want to take a visit to the property. Planning board, years ago, I went on there as a, for a site visit. Very interesting to see what's going on up in there, and what is there now that was never approved by this village. So you might want to consider a site visit and timeframes that they currently have now, and these trucks are those big 18-wheelers that come flying down the road that constantly go back and forth past my house. So just, if you, just a suggestion, site visit and check the times that they are actually operating before they come back in March, right? Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to Spayside?
Motion to adjourn to March 13th.
I'll make a motion to adjourn until March 13th.
13th? Very good. I think Michael beat him. Sorry.
Not talking.
Michael with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So Ms. Kolikowski, I see you've, you've joined us, but the, we were informed that the application was withdrawn. You withdrew the application, so that there's nothing further.
Okay, so I'm on the place under application, no, the nearest picture. The reason for this is that this is a little bit of a liability thing, in terms of new drawings of survey, I requested, I have a requirement of the halibuties in the facility as well, so I sort of give it a, um, say...
Okay.
We will look over to your new application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last on our agenda, this is for 11 Sunny Lane. Whoops, I lost my place, apologize. This is Hartman Design on behalf of Samuel Roth requesting variances for the construction of a 1,481-square-foot addition to a single-family dwelling, where his personal went to Section 310-7, the minimum lot area required is 2 acres, the minimum lot width is 175 feet, the minimum front yard setback is 40 feet, the minimum side yard setback is 30 feet, and the maximum permitted impervious coverage, impervious surface coverage, I'm struggling with that tonight, is 20%. The applicant is proposing 0.43 acres of lot area, 150 feet of total lot width, 26.6 feet of front yard, 16.2 feet of side yard, and 28% surface coverage respectively. Said property is located in the R2A zoning district at 11 Sunny Lane in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax map as Section 217, Block 5, Lot 12.1. Sir, good evening, welcome back.
Good evening. Happy New Year.
Same to you.
My name is Larry Hartman, Hartman Design, representing my client, who's seeking a zoning variance for this property. Basically, it's an existing house, they're doing an addition in the back with a deck. We're not doing any, as you saw on the bulk table, the zoning data, we're basically, all of the variances that we're requesting are pre-existing conditions, basically, which is the, as you mentioned, all of that. We're not going, we're not extending into any, any setbacks. We're only extending it to the rare, which has, which already, which basically complies with the zoning. The additional surface lot coverage that the addition adds, we're removing portions of the other previous areas in order to accommodate that. So in fact, the existing has a 30.4, 34.0 lot coverage, and the new one is going to be 28. So basically, all the, all the variances are pre-existing, which is basically the size of the lot. The existing house is a little bit, is to the, on the right side of the house, it's close to the right side property line and all of that. I did provide a booklet, basically showing existing floor plans, new floor plans, the elevations, how we're proposing the house, and most important, the site plan, which basically shows all the zoning compliance and everything.
I'm trying to zoom here. There we go. Okay, any board members have questions for the applicant?
I have one.
Beverly?
For now. The...
Can you just get a little closer to the mic? Thank you.
The proposed, the proposed structure seems a bit higher than the old. So my concern is the view from, from your neighbors to, from either side in the rare.
Yeah, Lucy, so basically, we do, on the left side, we're going to have the addition as well as a portion of the existing house, it's going to be a two-story house. I mean, it is pretty far from, especially on the right side, it is a good, about 55 feet from the property line. Basically, I believe it goes a little bit downhill. A typical two-story home is very typical in the area around here, especially if the basement is not exposed. And also, this house sits six feet lower, the first floor, six feet lower than the actual road. So if you take a look at the site plan, the road is at 766, near the house, this is 760. If you look at the topo, so basically, the whole house sits six foot lower than the hall, than the road. So I would say a typical two-story without any exposed basement, especially when it's six foot lower than the road, I don't think it's going to have any effect or anything.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The current structure, is that going to be demolished and rebuilt, or just going to add on to the current?
No, we're going to add on to it. Obviously, certain areas, so we did put a sheet number, says 106. You can see I have dashed lines, the existing versus the new.
But the current footprint is going to remain, it's going to extend it, for lack of better phrase?
Correct. So that, you can see, the whole right side of the house is not going to be touched, where it says bedroom 3, number 4, mechanical room, that whole thing's not going to be, so we're not going to demolish the whole house, we're going to add to it. A big, big portion of it is not going to be touched at all, so we're not going to... A big, big portion of it is not going to be touched at all, so we're not going to, it's not worth to demolish the whole thing.
Thank you.
I need to recuse myself from this decision, I just wanted to let you know.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. I will ask the public, which is Maria, would you like to comment on this application?
No, I thought, I thought just hang out.
Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Beverly.
All right.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. I go round as well. Okay, thank you.
I'll just summarize some of the variances, so it's clear for the record what's being required, or requested, excuse me. On the plans from Brian Friedler, it had the bulk table that was included on there. So what I'm reading really comes directly from that, but they're looking for a variance from the required lot area, which is an existing non-conformity. They're in the R2A district, so it requires two acres, but they only have a lot area of .43, so that's a variance of 1.57 acres. The required lot width is also an existing non-conformity. They're required to have 175 feet, they have 150 feet, so it's a 25-foot variance. The required front yard setback, the R2A requires a minimum of 40 feet, they're proposing a front yard setback of 26.6 feet, which is 13.4 feet. It looks like the existing dwelling does contain an existing non-conformity because it's located 25.6 feet from the front property line, but it appears from that drawing that by renovating or demolishing that part of the existing house, that, and rebuilding it, you're losing the entitlement as.
No, it's basically a new portion of the front, it's going to stay the way it is.
It's going to stay the way it is?
It's one foot of compound related to the existing 25.6 and the.
It's 26.6. So you need a variance for the 26.6 because you're increasing the non-conformity? Yeah.
No.
Yes.
The existing is 25.
Oh, I did it backwards, didn't I?
Then we're basically decreasing.
But are you tearing down that front and rebo, no, you're not. Then I stand corrected. If it's not coming down, then they don't need a front yard setback. I misunderstood the plans, I thought that was coming down. Required side yard setback, so along the northeast early property line, they're proposing a side yard setback of 16.2 feet. Again, you are constructing an addition which continues to the back, so that does increase the non-conformity, so a variance is needed just by extending the length of the dwelling. And then the maximum lot coverage, you're permitted 20%, the applicant's proposing 28%. And the applicant's submission says that the property currently has 34%, so that this would be a decrease in the existing non-conformity. They're saying that they're proposing to remove a 270.6 square foot paved walk, reducing the size of the driveway, removing a metal deck and removing the existing pool. So I just wanted to summarize that.
Yeah, summarize.
And the correction.
Yeah, the correction as well, thank you. So deliberation, will the granting of this variance produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or create a detriment to nearby properties? The applicant says no.
I agree. Actually, I think it improves the neighborhood.
Yeah.
It will improve, because facing houses around it, it makes it look nicer.
Agreed. Can the benefit you seek be achieved by some other feasible method other than the variances requested?
Again, based on the lot size they have, they have no choice to ask for a variance.
Or make the structure smaller.
It's.
Well, that changes the benefit, right? So the benefit sought would not be achievable by reducing it.
Larger thing is the benefit, so they couldn't get it any other way.
All right, with that logic.
How substantial is the variance that you are requesting? Very substantial, yes.
I agree, it is very substantial, but should not prevent us from proving if we want to.
Point taken.
If it was reasonable, you say.
Yep.
It's balancing.
It's, that's, it's a balance, that's why they're called the balancing. It's amazing. Will the granting of the variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? Applicant says no.
Agree.
I can't see how it would have a negative effect. It makes it prettier, that's about it.
Yeah, that's the aesthetic, aesthetic.
Aesthetic.
Side of it. I can't see that, footprint's not changing, so environmental, right, wouldn't change really.
Footprint is changing, but it's.
So there's a concern. Right. Well, it's being increased by 1,481 square feet.
But the impervious surface is actually going to be reduced, so it's, there's a balancing there. I think there's some, there's some pluses and minuses potentially there, but I appreciate the effect of reducing the impervious surface size, so. Anything else? No? Is the alleged difficulty self-created? It says no, it's existing.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we all would agree that.
It's almost always yes, because you're voluntary.
By requesting the variance itself created.
But it doesn't stop us from.
But it does not stop us, correct. Any other comments, thoughts on this application?
No. I mean, as long as they said it's just an extension to the existing property, property size itself is small to begin with and it's going to improve the neighborhood.
I'll request a motion to ask council to draft a decision based on the discussions we've had here this evening.
I'll make a motion for council to draft a decision based on the discussions we have this evening.
Motion by Ed, second?
Second.
Second? Many seconds?
Mike.
I got that.
Yeah, I give it to Mike.
She was actually giving me permission to say seconds. You heard the second part of it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And we, did we get, yes, we did, the GML 239M was received on this and it was local determination.
Okay. 18 minutes.
And this would be a type two action under SECA. That doesn't need to be voted on, does it? Just a statement.
Uh, just a statement.
All right, so statement made.
Statement made. I'm going to adopt the decision.
It will say, type two. Very good. So that will be ready for next month, I would say. Very good. I do have one off-topic comment that I'll make, but I'll talk to you afterwards. That was weird. So with no further business to conduct, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Motion by Michael, second by Beverly? Well, I got a wave here and I heard you, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I've just.